Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 8, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment. Chairman Avaloni, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. I don't but notice that this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notes and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the board secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. This meeting is being recorded by APTV. Roll call, please, Marie.
Wendy Glassman absent, Daniel Harris absent, Russell Lewis.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Natalie Passerini.
Here.
J.J. Hall.
Here.
Vice Chair Scully.
Here.
And Chairman Avaloni.
Here. Okay, so just a couple of announcements first. I just wanted to let everybody know Tim Slick has resigned from the Asbury Park Zoning Board for his own, for their personal reasons. And we'll be having a education session this meeting. There will be no applications. Obviously, we have nobody in the public, so I don't have to say that the public doesn't participate. And I would say, please make this as interactive as possible, ask a lot of questions. Both Jack and Donna will be presenting. And the thing is, though, we have to be very careful about what questions we ask, that we do not specify a particular application or property, either past, present, or future. Thank you.
Yeah, couch everything in terms of a hypothetical, if you don't mind. Ladies first. I'm all fashion.
Good evening, everybody. Again, I'd like this to be conversational. I don't want to lecture you about stuff that is, what I think is important. This is for you guys. I know you've had questions in the past about how should we be looking at certain types of applications? You know, what are the appropriate sort of parameters to filter things through? So we're just gonna, you know, very sort of 30,000 P talk about, you know, what do we do? Most of us know the zoning board just through, I think we have 15 years of experience on the board, right? About more.
I'd say more.
I'm in my 20th year.
Between Russell and Christopher, they've been around a long time, like me.
I have 15 years.
Okay, yeah.
Six.
So you guys have seen a lot of things.
We've seen a lot of changes for Asbury Park in general.
Oh, yeah.
And, but one of the biggest things from the zoning board's actual perspective is we change the rules, right, in town? So what does the zoning board do? People come here when they want to do something that's not allowed. And in 2021, we, the city, adopted amendments to the zoning ordinance and land development regulations that were recommended by the master plan reexamination that the city undertook in 2017. So there were a lot of things that were conventional wisdom, A-OK, we've been doing it a long time this way, that got shelved, thrown in the trash, and we're doing it differently now. And so when we see things like, you know, just generically.
Garages.
Fences, garages, yes. You know, but that's how it is on 90% of these other houses on the block. Yeah, well, you know, just in the last five years, things have changed, not to mention how many times in the past before that the standards may have been different. So one thing we have to keep in mind is understanding that relationship of the city undergoes a planning process to develop policies on land use. And that is how we get the rules that regulate land use. So we're gonna go through that process again in 27, 2027. There's actually some pending zoning amendments that we've been working on right now to sort of clean up from the last, the last batch in '21. And so that's one of those things, it's this ongoing process. We look for those, the guidance from the policies and the master plan, but the rules are the rules, and that's why people come here to seek relief from you guys. And so a little further down, we'll get into more the meat of, you know, how you make those decisions and things. But, so there's different ways of coming here, right? Some people want an interpretation of how the law applies to them, or what it is they want to do. Some are appeals. I don't like what the zoning officer said about what I want to do. I think they're wrong. I think they're reading the ordinance wrong. And some are just straight up, all right, I get it, it's not allowed, but I want to do it. How do I convince you guys to let me do it? And that even applies to the ones that come through as a violation.
How does an appeal vary to an interpretation, though?
May I?
Yeah, sure.
Sure, okay.
That's what I thought I heard.
Okay. All right, I don't know if you saw the lecture outline that I circulated earlier?
I sent an email out, yes.
Okay. Under the primary powers of the board, you look in Section 70, you got the right to do interpretations, appeals from any zoning officer or administrator, which is basically the zoning officer, or any special questions that come to us, and C variances, which are bulk, basically, D variances, which are use, category of use, design exceptions, which we see a lot of lately, here and there, some inherently beneficial uses, such as things like a men's shelter or something like that. But basically, the appeal process is from the zoning officer's decision. The interpretation is this: somebody's saying that the ordinance, they want an interpretation that this ordinance allows them to do what they did. Quite often, people will, if they've been shut out of the appeal process because they've gone too, they've gone too long, and the time to appeal has expired, they'll try and do a backdoor approach, because they're very, they kind of cross back and forth on these applicants when they come in, in their presentation. All you're doing in an interpretation is, is you're taking the literal reading of the ordinance and you're applying it to the facts. That's all you're doing, okay? Is a swimming pool allowed? Yes or no? And there's, white and black areas are real easy. It's when you get into the gray areas about rooftop decks, all that other stuff. So that's what that is, all that is, it's that simple. And when you're, when they're making their presentation, remember, the burden of proof is always on the applicant, not on you. It's not on you to craft a remedy for the applicant. That's planning board, okay? Your job is to hear the case. You decide the case. Have they proven to you by a preponderance of the evidence? It's not beyond a reasonable doubt, where you hear it on TV, which is the criminal law standard. It's just a preponderance of the evidence, that you're basically swayed by the evidence that you see, that they're either, they have met their burden of proof, or they haven't, okay? But you always, you always back it up with, what does the ordinance say that they're asking you to interpret? And you just apply it to the facts. You don't have to engage, you can engage in colloquial discussions, but you don't have to convince them. Recently, we had a case where it sounded as if one or two board members.
Careful. We just don't look. Dogs, we're in the future.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about any specific case, okay? But just in general, I've seen in a recent case that where board members engaged in a discussion with the witness, and it was as if they were trying to convince the witness to the board's members' feelings. You don't have to do that. It's the opposite. They have to convince you. And if you don't, you could hear somebody out respectfully, unless they're coming up with something crazy that just is beyond reason. And when you're done, you're done. You just say thank you very much, and then you can do your deliberation. You just, you have your own opinion, if they're correct or they're not.
But essentially, Jack, an appeal or an interpretation is just reviewing the ordinance again, applying it, right?
Yes. In the first case in the appeal, the zoning officer has already reviewed the ordinance. The gatekeeper of the zoning ordinance, under the municipal land use law, is the zoning, is the zoning officer. First comes through the gate, at their doorsteps, they interpret things and they may say, uh-uh, you need a use variance, uh-uh, you need a bulk variance, or a setback, or something, you know, of that nature. If they don't like, if the applicant doesn't like what they've done, or they, they think they're wrong for some reason, they can file an appeal.
But what has a limit, a time limit on it to do, versus the other one is unlimited?
Does not. The other one is just, they're, they're coming to you and saying, we would like you to interpret this in, as, for what we're trying to do. It's sort of a backdoor way, but then quite often in other areas, I've seen it, where it purely comes in as a question of, we're not sure what the ordinance means, and then you have to fill in the gaps. There are times when there's gaps in ordinances where nobody knows what the answer is.
But is it our job to interpret the zoning officer's opinion? Isn't it really just changing the opinion of the zoning officer?
On an appeal. Basically, on an appeal, it is, if you feel that the zoning officer made a mistake.
But that's saying that we have more knowledge than the zoning officer, isn't it?
No, it's saying that the state law gives you the ultimate power, as the appeals or the appellate process, that you have the final say at the, at this level. Zoning officer makes a decision, you're the.
But none of us have had the training that a zoning officer has.
You don't have to. It's, it's your statutory responsibility under the first paragraph that says, the zone, all questions of interpretation come, come to the zoning board, and the zoning board makes the determination, not the mayor and council.
And it's a strict reading. It's not like you have to.
Yeah. And sometimes you'll agree with the zoning officer, and sometimes you won't. A good zoning officer makes intelligent decisions. Zone, and on an appeal from a zoning officer's decision, he or she should always be here to defend their decision, absolutely. Can't have Donna do it, can't have anybody else do it but the zoning officer, because they've got to give you the rhyme and reason and the quote within the local ordinance as to why they did what they did. On occasion, you might disagree. Not, it doesn't, I would say the majority of cases, most boards don't disagree with their zoning officer, because they usually hire somebody competent that has the training and experience, that knows how.
Well, that's the hope, right? That the city always is making mistakes.
Right. But if they do, that's why you're here. Every, every, there's always a higher court, so to speak, until you get to the Supreme Court, to overlook, we're all human, we can all make mistakes at whatever level. And even if you apply, you say the zoning officer is correct, let's say, in a case, they still have the right to appeal that decision to the Superior Court. Superior Court gets to look over the whole record and the evidence, and they can say, no, you were wrong, zoning officer was wrong, you're wrong, it's this. They send it back.
But the Superior Court has even less knowledge than, I think, than the zoning officer in a lot of cases, wouldn't you say, Jack?
Well, that depends. That's a lawyer-like response. That depends. Quite often, I've gone out over the years, if I have a skilled applicant's attorney or objector's attorney or something like that, and you get a judge that never practiced land use law, quite often, they will tell you, because they always conference things, they'll always tell you, look, you guys know more about this. I had one judge say to me, what I know about zoning and planning law can fit on the head of a pin. I'm in a room with a bunch of land use attorneys who really know their stuff. Let's talk. And let's not go out there and have an inexperienced judge render a decision that we're all scratching our heads, saying, you blew it, you know? Nobody, nobody wants a bad decision. Do you disagree with me? You know, you can agree with the other side, agree with me. That's okay. That's, that's the way ballgames are played, and lawsuits are made. But I don't want a judge that is unknowing. Most of them, when they realize they have skilled attorneys in front of them, they make sure their law clerk does a thorough job in doing their research. And then you have, or they'll probably have an oral argument, whether it's now virtual years ago, it used to go to court. And quite often, if I think a judge is going in a wrong direction, clearly going in a wrong direction, at 47 years' worth of experience, I kind of know how to say, with all due respect, I think that you just might be missing the point, and try and bring the judge back. And there again, if the judge makes a bad decision, you can always appeal to the appellate division. And then you have to hope that the panel you get knows zoning and, knows land use law, and/or they have really good law clerks that do a good job.
It's such a niche part of the law, right?
Yes.
That, you know, you're not going to get really well-versed judges all the time, I would say.
No, but you get, you get a reasonably good outcome most of the time. I mean, there are times I've walked out of there and I've had judges who I was just like, they're just, they're just, they're just imposing their will. They want it this way. And this is, they're gonna bootstrap themselves into an opinion, and they're wrong. But, you know, practiced law for 47 years, you gotta, you gotta get used to wins and losses. Some you win, you don't think you're gonna win, and some you lose, you don't think you're gonna lose. It's just, just the way the game's played. But never let it throw you, okay? People come here for a reason, right? You're the last resort in the town, you know, at this level, the municipal level.
That's sad.
No, 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 it's not sad. Actually, it's good, because you're the citizens of the community, the system has given you the rights to interpret things, you know? I think it's a good system. I, I, I think it works.
And the courts recognize.
Yes.
That as a panel of local residents.
Yes.
You have that.
Yeah.
Local knowledge, experience.
Kramer versus the Board of Adjustment of Seagurt, okay? Way a landmark case from many years ago. The court's not supposed to substitute its judgment in favor of yours, unless you've made an arbitrary, unreasonable, or capricious decision. The court has to, should, by law, uphold you. Even if they don't agree with you, they should uphold you, because you're the local citizens, you know the town, you know what the applicant presented, you, you are the best trier of the facts and your, and what is good, what is good within your community.
Because, again, even an appeal isn't rehearing the case.
No, they can, they, on occasion, they'll ask for more testimony. Or, the better thing is, when I see a case going in a direction where there's confusion, I don't, if I see a reversal coming, I stop that and I say, well, then the answer is, you gotta remand it back for further hearings. And then we come back and we get a second bite at the apple. Whenever I see anything like that coming, where I get a sense, unless there's a blatant error, I mean, on occasion, not this board, but remember, I've been representing this board since January 1 of '95. So on occasion, I've had decisions that were really good and really bad. If I think it should go back, I'll, I'll, I'll try and rest it and have it sent back. And then give, get further opportunity to hear the case.
So that's interpretations and appeals.
Yes.
There are other.
Yeah.
Variance applications.
Yeah, your Section 70 clearly, this, this, this outline gives it to you straight. Your primary jurisdiction is bulk and use variances, okay?
And you can get site plan approvals.
Yeah, but that's your, but that's your primary jurisdiction. On occasion, your secondary jurisdiction is that you're permitted to grant site plans, applications, approvals, subdivisions and the like, but it has to be in connection with a use variance application, okay?
We rarely get subdivisions, though.
No, you're not. You're in an urban area, and you're hardly ever going to get site plan applications, because typically, site plan applications are going to be for permitted uses. If they're permitted use, and they have bulk variances, they're automatically over at the planning board, right? You'll just see, I don't think I've seen a site plan application in the 30-some years I've been representing the board, maybe five, six times, seven times.
You have two in the last five years.
Yeah, that's it. Not a lot, because you just, and especially in a town that's developed, remember, you're in an urban area, small, but still urban, okay? This is totally different from Colts Neck, or, you know, out west, a freehold area, whatever.
Out with the.
Yeah, and well, and out, and out where they're taking farmland and turning it into subdivisions, housing, shopping centers, and the like. Here, you're faced with a completely different set of problems and issues. You're always gonna have a ton of non-conforming uses, were they created validly or not? That's always, when I was in Long Branch for 10 years, we went through the same thing. Any urban area where you see where there was once a single family has, that now has multiple families, it's always gonna be, it's always gonna come up as to how did it get from a single to a double, a triple, or a quad, something like that. So your primary jurisdiction is, is your bulks and use. You have what's known as, like, non-conforming uses. And this, this has come up a lot. The law on non-conforming uses is very straightforward, okay?
All right, put a pin in that, though. Put a pin in that. I don't want to go too deep in that yet, let's.
All right, all right, so.
Those are, those are the.
Those are, those are basically.
The broad format.
Yeah, that's the broad format. You, in here, you go to the book, or you go to your little pamphlet that they gave you, or whatever they gave you, they give you the criteria. Positive criteria is hardship variance, a C1 or a C2, okay? What's the shape, size, topography?
Is it every application, in terms of a hardship? That's why they're.
Well, not in the, hardship is not defined as, well, I have a personal hardship. It has to be something relating to the land, okay? That's a C1. C2 is.
Like a small lot that.
So like when we have the undersized lots, and people wanted to pronounce that that was a hardship?
That's a hardship.
And then even those, there are certain tests.
But I don't think, I think most applicants see it that way, though, Donna.
No.
No, they, they don't understand.
To them, everything's a hardship, right? They, they want this because they want it.
That's a subjective criteria. It's a personal want.
And like we said, even with those undersized lots, there's a test that each of those applicants have to go through. Is there land available? Did you ask those people if they want to sell that land?
Right.
Right? It's, it's not just some subjective, you know, should we put a house here or something? You guys have to weigh that, you know, first we go through the test, evaluate that, compare it against the policies in the master plan, that guide, you know, what it does to the zone plan and the public benefit, substantial detriment, in the positive and negative criteria.
And then another positive under, under this, C1, C2. C1 is topography, shape, size, et cetera, okay? C2 is it's a better use of the land, this is more appropriate than the zoning ordinance itself says, you should go with this essentially, okay? In the old days, there was a time when a lawyer would never present a variance case without trying to attempt to tie it in to the criteria in the law. They'll say, well, you know, it's clearly the shape, size, the topography's uneven, whatever it is, even if it's like real far off, they always try to tie it into that criteria, because a lot of people just come in and they just tell you their case and say, we, it's a hardship on us, we want to put a house there, we want to move there, it's what we want, okay? The other thing is, you gotta make sure that there's no substantial detriment to the public good, which is the neighborhood, okay? No substantial detriment to the zone plan, zoning ordinances, that your deviation is not a substantial deviation, and that there's no substantial detriment or inconsistency with the master plan. So what they're looking to do should be within one of the stated goals of the master plan. That's why you get testimony from planners, so they can tie it all in. And a use variance, it's always special reasons for the D1 through 5, you're always looking at those, and there's a whole list of them, and they're listed right in the book or in the primer, okay? And it's the same negative criteria for the, for the D variance that it is for the, for the C, you always have to go through the, the negative criteria, the neighborhood, master plan, and zoning ordinance, as long as it's not a substantial detriment to any of those. And basically, that's, that's where you're at. You get into some other esoteric things here and there, which are, there's no reason to discuss them until they come up, which I could always tell you.
I find the most esoteric, or most difficult things to review are design exceptions.
Ah, no.
Really?
The law, the law, we have.
But because they're not really a variance per se, and because they're not a variance, design exceptions are sort of like, do you like it or not, right?
Well, there's, Donna always points it out in her report, she saves me the time, effort, and your money, by doing that, that there's only the positive criteria. You don't, there's no two steps analysis with the positive and the negative. It's just a positive, but it still has to, they're still supposed to demonstrate a hardship, technically, why, there's some practical problem with them complying with that, with that section of the ordinance now.
Yeah, but we've heard COVID was a problem, right?
Yeah, and realistically.
Is that a problem for us to deal with COVID, right? I find that really a superfluous argument and ridiculous.
Well, it is, because it's, it's a temporary thing.
Well, I, I will give a little bit that in some of those instances that seemed self-created, right, yes, things were hard to get during.
Yeah, okay.
The start of COVID, and we had a lot of problems with supply of materials and costs of goods. But that doesn't mean your decision-making had to be against the ordinance to achieve the thing you wanted. Like, you know, I built a deck, I still got lumber, but I didn't, you know, I was aware of what I was doing and whether it was in compliance, whereas other people were like, well, you know, this is what we wanted.
Yeah, it's still subjective, and it's, it's passive. It's not a permanent situation. Remember, you're going, variances are granted in perpetuity, for the most part, okay? That runs with the land. It's not, no, 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 not really. When you're talking about COVID and things like that, you don't want it, that, that shouldn't influence your decision, because that's gonna blow over at some point.
Yeah, it's been used as an argument.
Well, you, they can, they, remember, your job is not to convince them of their wrongness. Their job is to convince you of their righteousness.
That needs clarification for the board members, is why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, oh, you know, it's the applicant's burden.
So again, with a design exception, there's hardship. So, but it has to be, like we said, a hardship that's not that applicant's personal.
Yeah.
You know?
Subjective hardship.
Subjective hardship, yes.
It's gotta be something.
Something like COVID is a temporary situation.
Yeah, it's gotta be something. But again, look, I understand, we're all humans, but boards are boards, the law is the law. If every board was really strictly to the letter of the law applying these rules, there would be very little relief granted by any board, okay? That's why it's still made up of local citizens as opposed to a regional or a state board, because then once, in my, during my.
Or just in the hands of the zoning officer with no appeal.
Yeah, in my career, there was a move at one time where they tried to say, we should take the power away from the locals, because you might get a difference in decision in each town. I, I don't have a problem with that, as long as you're not violating basic constitutional laws, or the land use law. I think it should be somewhat subjective per town, because it's your community. This community is different from Marlboro, okay? And you're gonna apply what you know is the life of this community to these, to these applications. So that, that stopped dead in its tracks under the home rule situation. Some legislators tried that back in the 80s. It didn't work, which I'm glad it didn't, because I always think that it should rest with you at the local level. And basically, if you have these, you just use this memo and go into a Cox book, any one of them, they may change the page from year to year, which is, leads me to one other point. I'm trying to develop a little reference library where I can give you some of these old Cox books to leave with, with Marie, so that if you have issues and you want to read, and I gave one to John, I'll try and give a couple there that are not too much, because I'm, I'm a lawyer, I write over things, make notes.
Those are tough to read.
I know, I make notes and stuff. So in a lot of towns, there was always one or two copies purchased every year for the staff.
I think Marie did purchase some, didn't you?
There, Michelle did order them, and she usually has extra copies upstairs in the office.
Yeah, you know, and sign out.
Gets you an online version of it, too.
Yeah, and you can get an online version of it.
There probably is. It'll come in the back of the book.
Yeah, and, and if they have the, something that they designed for board members, this is for attorneys, I mean, you don't need, I'm, I'm not trying to turn you all into attorneys. You just need, you just need enough information, you don't need to inundate yourselves and become analytically like myself as to what laws and all that, that's, that's not what this is.
Well, so, and again, I'm not sure how many of you guys even know what we're talking about, the Cox, the Cox.
The treatise.
Was originally, this guy came up with a summary of all the case law, every year, the, what, what happened, how it affected the land use law. And I think my first one was '94, '93?
You're, you're young. Mine go back to the beginning.
But it was thinner, and, and the font was larger.
Yeah.
And they keep, like, shrinking it, condensing it to try and keep it in a usual format.
Yeah.
But, you know, yeah, it's more of a lawyer thing.
Yeah, this is, this is more a treatise.
But it helps us, again, guide you guys when we get a case that's a particular type of relief. that's a particular type of relief, so non-conforming uses or conditional uses, use variances or density. These are things that have gone up to Supreme Court? Even, even just appellate, is it just appellate?
Is each county have its own land use law ordinances?
Yes.
And they've been designed by the city councils of each of those counties?
Exactly.
Yeah, but based on recommend, they're, they're, the whole body of laws.
The planning board, the process we went through with the ordinance amendments.
I know.
And that's, every town does it?
Yeah, you follow the municipal land use law.
Some of them do it more often than others.
Back in seventy-six or seven, yeah, seventy-six, I was a law clerk in the summer.
So you could never really compare, say, the setback of one town to the setback of another town, whether it's front, side, or rear. They would be different.
Well, you can, they, each one of them gonna have their own list of setbacks. In an urban area, you're not gonna require ninety-foot setbacks, okay? Out in Marlboro, you can, can't do that here, so.
Interestingly enough though, in Howell, where I live, in a six acre zone, you're still not allowed to have things in the front yard set.
Yeah, I mean, there's some common themes.
Even though it's a hundred feet deep.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some common themes that run through all of them.
Right? Is it okay if I put a shed in my front yard compared to putting a shed in a front yard in Asbury Park?
Basic structure.
Some of them keep the same ideas, they use model ordinances, so a lot of them have the same similarities, but there are, there are dramatic differences.
The basic structure of, of municipal land use regulations, which are in the form of ordinances, are typically the same like format, but each town has its own individual needs and creates its own rules pursuant to its master plan, the directives of its master plan. All within which falls under the municipal land use law. You can't create things outside the four corners of this, so that you have some uniformity and constitutionality to the laws. And basically, that's what you gotta do, you gotta analyze it, but never think, you know, you don't, I, I know it's tough because they're your neighbors. I'm not saying you should deny anybody, but always do your, always make sure that you keep yourself in the position of, they have to convince me by a preponderance of the evidence, you know, it isn't just.
Evidence.
Evidence, yeah.
It's gotta be evidence.
It's gotta be.
It can't be somebody's opinion.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I feel like this is the way it seems like.
They're gonna get up there and say things like that, but you just take it in and just when you do your analysis in your mind before you vote, you apply, you apply it the way you see fit.
Any other questions about design exceptions?
Yeah, the, 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 design exceptions can be tricky.
I find those the most difficult to deal with.
Because they're, they're, they're certainly a lesser standard of proof. And it says that design exceptions may be granted in connection with site plan applications.
But the other thing is we're not supposed to be designers, right?
Well, so, so, design exceptions are, are based in the fact that we have site plans and there are regulations pertaining to site plans that may not be as important as what's the location of the building, like a parking space size.
But I'm talking like the, the shape of a roof, trying to match it to the other shape of the roof, right? And, and that becomes like an issue when I, as a personal, I, I look at it and say, I don't like the way that looks, right? And I want the roof line to match the other roof line. So, you know, in a way, I'm trying to redesign what they want.
And, and that's, that's the thing, some of them are more technical, like the size and shape of a parking stall, and some of them are more subjective as to how things look. So those whole community design regulations are all very, the city has decided how we want buildings to look.
But I want a Victorian to be a Victorian. I want a Dutch colonial to look like a Dutch colonial.
I hear you.
So.
We had, you know, the planning board last night, they're, you know, waterfront development, eleven design exceptions related to the guidelines about the design of the building. And, and the planning board, you know, kind of had to swallow the poll.
Yeah, it's not uncommon. It's, it's very difficult, except in the perfect world, to bring something, bring a project in that meets every, what's in the four corners of the ordinances. It's very difficult.
Then we have the added effect of, is this considered a historic district, right? And so are we, are we changing the look of that historic district because all of a sudden, somebody wants to put a contemporary home there?
But legally, we don't have a historic district.
So in our ordinance, we have a section that says, R1, R2, and R3 zones are considered historic districts, but it's historic, not the capital H National Trust type of historic, it's the historic architecture of the city. And that's what it relates to. So, um, we want all of the houses renovations and new construction to reflect that history, that architectural history. And that's what the community design regulations are about, matching roof styles and having porches. I'm sorry, John.
That's where it falls into, right? The historic, the historic district is more about the design exceptions, so to speak.
Well, that's where Chris is having problems with applying the design exceptions, yeah. But we do have historic districts, you know, capital H historic districts in the CBD, over on Sunset, um, and.
But legally, we have them?
Yeah, yeah. Those are National Trust registered districts. Across the street, uh, the bank where, uh, Garden State Equality is now, that's a listed national historic building.
Sunset, it's Sunset Park is the historic?
Around Sunset Park, yeah, in the neighborhood.
Like what it means for applications in and around that area?
So, um, when, if we get an application in one of those districts and they're changing a historic structure or something, there are buildings within the district that are not historic.
How would we know that?
They're on a map.
Okay.
Um, a couple of, a couple of ways. If you use the interactive zoning map that the city has, there's a layer for that.
Would you mention it in your report?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Donna always points out.
Usually Donna points it out.
Yeah.
Most of those, you know, happen in front of the planning board.
But does that limit us more than Donna?
We did have one historic district application in the last six years, but it was not a listed structure, it was just that it was in the district. And, um, so again, those applications, if it's, if the structure is a listed structure, there's basically, you know, a test, series of questions you have to ask about, did they receive any federal funding to renovate, acquire, do things to the building? Uh, that helps, uh, recapture funds, you know. We use federal money to do something to preserve this building, you can't undo that, or else you have to give the money back. There are some historic structures that the activity in the area might affect the, either the view of it or its presence in the district. Those are, uh, you know, a, a real heavy lift, but those are usually only when, applied when it's the government taking that action. So if the city were going to demolish the bridge over Sunset, Sunset Lake, that would be like a huge thing. Wouldn't come to the zoning board, of course, because it's not a zoning action. Actions by the government do not get municipal review.
Only in limited cases with the Board of Ed, that type of thing.
But the former federal government might have given, would have undertaken review under the auspices of the National Trust. But at the local level, yeah, you can demolish a historic building, you can modify a historic building, it doesn't have to be, you know, modified in a way that maintains the historic character. The, those, those types of regs really only apply to, if you're using federal funds, you are the government undertaking that activity.
So in terms of design exceptions for anything that would come here in a historic district, should we be?
You would be evaluating them just as our community design regulations, design exceptions.
So there's no difference basically, the fact that it's in a historic district, based on what you just said?
Effectively, yes.
Yeah, unless it's one of those, unless it's one of those buildings that you can't disturb because it's registered and all that.
Well, again, even if it's, even if it's registered, unless the person undertaking the renovation or the building itself have received federal funds.
Right, if, I'm saying in that, in that type of case, you can't, but she would point that out. We would, that would come out in a testimony and say, okay, this one's off limits. But like any other reg, for the most part, from what I'm hearing Donna say, those.
You like to stonewall that building.
Yeah.
You know, that's a historic building in a historic district that received federal funding, grant funding to do the original renovation. I believe Sacman tapped into some, some funding sources. So that one gets some scrutiny when, if anything goes on there.
But there's also another way to view it too. If you have a neighborhood with specific roof designs, right? Generally, you have to keep to that same type of roof?
Well, so, and that was one of the things we changed in the ordinance amendments. We said, you don't have to have the same kind of roof if you're doing a renovation or an addition to an existing building. It just has to be a roof style that's found in the, in the neighborhood.
But for instance, some, a lot of people now wanna move towards these metal roofs because they're, they're, they last longer, right?
They're safer.
I don't know, safer?
For fire, yeah. Metal is way safer.
But very few people in a neighborhood have metal roofs, right? So, but yet, they wanna switch to a metal roof.
Okay.
Is that an automatic way for us to deny that?
Only if there's a standard that they're violating. Remember.
It's not denying in the city.
You can't, you can't just deny something on subjective standards, cause it's the way you wanna see things. You have to apply crit, uniform criteria, so that you apply it to the next person that comes in with the same, similar application.
But there's no metal roofs in that neighborhood, if somebody wants to put on a metal roof, so.
Hold on, but metal is a finish, it's not a design.
That's true.
Well, but we still regulate materials and finishes.
Unless your design ordinance goes down to materials of what you, you know, the siding and the roofing material, unless your ordinances go into that detail of language, you can't necessarily tell someone they can't finish their roof or something. You can talk about pitch, you can talk about general design.
So it's, there's a little bit of gray area with roofs in our ordinance. It's not that it wouldn't be allowed. It has to be accurate.
Accurate?
Like, could you have had a standing seam metal roof on a similarly styled building?
So then I get Donna.
Like, maybe it was slate originally, we're not doing slate roofs. Would metal have been an alternative? Yeah, we had metal roofs historically on Victorian buildings, colonial buildings, quasi Queen Anne buildings, craftsmen buildings. Again, zoning officer is gonna determine whether it's appropriate by looking at neighborhood, history, architectural style of the building, and how it reads, how they read that section of the ordinance. You know, is it the whole roof, is it a section of the roof, what are we doing?
It sounds a little nebulous to, for us to review.
It is, that's why it's the zoning officer making a decision based on a lot of criteria, and if somebody doesn't agree, then they come here. You know, we like to say it's very black and white sometimes, you know, the zoning officer is the authority, they're, they're evaluating these things.
If they apply subjective standards versus objective standards, that's grounds for appeal and reversal. Everything, as, as John well knows, he's an attorney, under the law, you have to have objective standards that are applied equally under the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution, state constitution and the like. So you put all the way down the line, even into zoning and planning. You can't just have these nebulous set of criteria so that you come in and maybe one board likes this, and somebody else comes in, I don't like that, but it's the same thing that over here, we don't like the person. It's gotta kind of be neutral, neutral, you know, it's gotta be an objective set of standards, it can't be subjective.
Can you define neighborhood for me?
Well, that, there's, I, I don't, I don't know the definition of neighborhood. The neighborhood is probably, it's easily within two hundred feet, which is what you have to have notice. But in the general vicinity of the area, you know, the idea, that's really something, that's, that's a term of art that you folks have to deploy. You, if they tell you six blocks away, there's a house with such and such, and this is, uh, you know, Kingsley and First versus Sixth and Bond, I don't think you're gonna buy that.
Sixth and Bond would be.
Yeah, well, I know, it's back there. Believe me, I know that. But you, you, you're gonna, you're gonna say, okay, you listen to them and say, okay. But you might say, you might wanna engage them and say, I don't agree with you, that's not the neighborhood, or you just listen and say, thank you very much, and then when you do your analysis, you just say, no, I don't buy, I don't buy that planner's testimony that this is, that what they're claiming to be within the neighborhood, it's not within the neighborhood. That goes into your matrix of thought as to whether or not you grant or deny the relief requested. Or you buy into why they're claiming their client should be entitled to the relief requested.
So on that, there are criteria within the design regulations that say, on the same block front? Or on the same block, either side of the, you know, both sides of the street? So it gives you that frame of reference, it's not just the entire side or.
Yeah, if there's something in the ordinance, Donna will always point it out.
And, and metal roofs are permitted. Just, I was, I wanted to see in materials, cause I thought metal roofs weren't allowed, metal roofs are allowed, so. You know, I, I'm getting dinged on a criteria like that.
Chris's windows, like often become a big deal.
Right, well, in some places in Howell, if you hit historic district with historic district guidelines, like you won't be able to use a vinyl window. Right? It has to be a wood frame window. We don't, we don't go to that level. We just wanna make sure, you know, it's a double hung or it's consistent with whatever the style of windows are from that period for that house, for that building. You know, so.
How much weight should be given to those things in a neighborhood when you're presented by an applicant, say, there's six houses that have this, and I wanna have it too? How much weight should be given to that?
Well, what's the problem?
And I know you're going to say that every applicant, every applicant should be on its own merit, right?
Are those things, the thing that isn't allowed?
Yes.
That, I mean, I don't, I don't know why it wouldn't have been allowed then.
Yeah, um.
Unless it's a thing that's.
You can't bootstrap yourself in by saying, well, no, it's not allowed, but since they have it, I should have it. That depends.
But you got for that.
Yeah, well, you have to, you, you have to then in your analysis say, okay, there's three quarters of this neighborhood that don't have it. We don't know how they have these, these five or six have it. We don't know how. If the character of the neighborhood, in your opinion, as board members, is still of the old look versus the new look, then the fact that four or five other houses have it doesn't mean that that's the new character of the neighborhood. In your analysis. So this is where one day, they throw a baseball and it's a ball, and some, the next day it's a strike.
But we've been given pictures, right, where they'll show us six houses.
Yeah, I get it.
And those six houses have what I want.
Okay, just because they exist elsewhere, doesn't necessarily mean that you have to grant it. Unless there's a consistent pattern, clearly a consistent pattern throughout the neighborhood, and then, then that's a different story.
Well, and there's a thing in the ordinance also that says, is the element architecturally accurate? Is it in character with the building and the historic district that it's located in? You know, based on the, the architectural style, the building's history, within the existing block front on either side of the street? And are there existing historic buildings with distinguishing features? And I'm, I'm thinking of a couple of sites where we've had applications before.
You're, you're gonna get into extreme cases.
You know, you still have to, yeah, they're gonna give you pictures of twelve buildings and you're gonna throw out the ones that, well, not in our neighborhood, you know, not within the block front, not on either side of the street, not architecturally accurate, not, you know, in character with the rest of the neighborhood. Cause again, if these twelve buildings are, you know, on the side street, not on the block front, two blocks away, whatever it is, you know, these are the parameters, how you weight it, like you're saying, how do I weight that?
This, this again goes back to that burden of proof. They've paid their professional staff to present the case that they should, that to get what they want.
Sure.
You're on the other side.
It's the capability of the evidence.
You're on the other side of, okay, they're trying to sell me this. Does this, are they accurate in their sales pitch? Is it correct? Is it, is it the legal criteria or is it not?
Can you guys go into a little bit about garages? Because I know that a couple of years ago or last year, that. I was a little surprised, I think a couple other were, that there was a revision of the ordinance.
We just did that.
Yeah, and that it was allowed to be closer to the front. So can you speak to like why it was changed, how it was changed and what we should be looking for now?
So. I think the zoning office was seeing a lot of applications for new developments in the family houses. The typical, you know, stock plans that everybody has is there's an attached garage.
Attached garages now.
And the garage opening faces the street and that's not characteristic of our town. Garages are usually detached, you know, in the back of the lot. At least in, you know, certain parts of town. We do have some townhouses where, you know, you have the garage, it's facing the street, it's right in the front building line. So the standard was developed to, you know, say, okay. You know, get with the times, I guess, you know, it's more modern, convenient, typical to have a attached garage. But we don't want it to be the dominant architectural feature in the front of the house, so. You know, I don't know who came up with the five feet, but.
It was offset.
It needs to be offset from the front building line, at least five feet. That was like, that should give it some visual something. You know, it can't be a lot, otherwise. You know, if we only have a hundred foot deep lot, you know, so as to be able to fit within a 5,000 square foot lot, typical minimum Asbury lot configuration. So I think that was, you know, how it came about. Wasn't too egregious, wasn't, you know.
Just to add a little bit to that, Donna, there were, a lot of the ordinance were reviewed. And we, we looked at various trends through applications over a period of time. And where we saw.
Yeah, there were some people coming in and it was like, well, how do we make them not put the garage in front of the main building? You know, we want to have that front porch. That's the key feature of a lot of the single family dwellings in town and multifamily dwellings in town. Again, this whole, what is the typical Asbury historic dwelling style? And I think for a lot of people, that's, you know, third through eighth on the east side and on the west side. You know, conventional, typical two and a half story gable and hip roof porch, open railings.
The process, there's a process.
So that's, so that was the, you're scowling, are you scowling at the idea or you're scally, what are you scowling about?
Um, I.
Just in a scally way, it's okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know what Jill's referring to. I mean, I stumbled into the, you know, to the garage fiasco with that neighbor.
It's a fiasco.
Fiasco. Yeah, I didn't even know that our ordinance had changed.
Yeah, I was going to explain to you.
Russell and I were both like, what?
I can explain.
There, there are certain things that have changed that we, that we were not educated. I'm thrilled.
Which, which is the problem.
Well, I'm thrilled that we're doing this educational classroom.
I mean, you remember what we went through, Chris.
Yeah, I know. It took years, it took two years to do it.
We were never told, we were never educated. So certainly for someone that has my tenure.
We have a flip book of all the changes that actually occurred.
Well, the way it occurs, the way it occurs under the law is first of all, you start out with the premise that zoning should not take place through variance applications. It should take place through legislative enactment, which is by the legislative branch of the government, which is the mayor and council, okay? Under the land use law. That being said, zoning board every year does a report to the city.
Where he just did what?
To the city that'll identify patterns of what you're seeing. For, if some, if they want these garages, you know, if you're starting to see that, that should go in, into the city, into the planning department in the city. And that should be taken into consideration when they do their review of their ordinances, okay? Then the process is before any redevelopment, any development ordinance can be amended. Mayor and council, they, they have their hearings, it's on their agendas, public has a right to go. And then whatever they come up with is referred to the planning board. No redevelopment ordinance, zoning ordinance or the like, site plan ordinance can be adopted unless it's first sent to the planning board for review and recommendations. Planning board has no authority to overturn what's been done. But the planning board does a legislative type hearing, hears from the public, makes recommendations. We think this should change, that should change, which is done all the time. And then it goes to the mayor and council, the mayor and council can ignore what the planning board said, can adopt some of it or adopt all of it. If they ignore it completely, there's different, there's, sometimes there's not a simple majority of a quorum, it's a majority of the full membership. But essentially that's, that's how the process works. I don't know what, how far they, the city goes, other than the legal statutory notices when they put it in the paper to change things. But I don't know how far the outreach is to the community to come in. Because during that legislative process, we hear from everybody. We allow them to come up, testify, give their opinion, you know? And, and that's how you decide, all of a sudden, you know, over the years, I've been here a long, I've probably been here longer than anybody, right? In turn, I haven't lived here longer than anybody, but I've been involved in Asbury Park longer. And you see, when we first did this whole redevelopment plan, there was an old faction within the city that did not want to change things. They wanted to keep things the way they were in the 1930s. There was a whole new group of people, yourselves included, that came in and said, look, it's our city. Those people are gone, we want our city to look this way. You're the constituents, it's your town, so now the town looks this way. So there's, that's how you get the flavor, you get the feedback from the general members of the community on the standards. You can't just stick to the old design standards because that's the way it was. You got to go, if, if, if the younger people or the majority of home families or individuals buying homes want certain features, they're going to, they're going to impress their elected officials to include these certain features now within the development.
Or they're going to come before the zoning board 900 times.
Or they're going to come before the zoning board. And when you start seeing.
We eliminate actually a lot of applications.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the way it should be.
Some of the ordinances, right, Donna?
Yeah, that's the way it should be because you don't want a zone by variance. After a while, you start seeing the same thing over and over again and you say, wait a minute, you got to, you got to redo this ordinance because members of the community want such and such.
There's something in the law.
Yes, exactly, yeah. And there's case law that says you're not supposed to do this, you're supposed to do it by legislative action.
You can have your ordinances invalidated if the court finds you guys are zoning by.
Yeah.
By the name.
Yeah. So that's the process. How the outreach doesn't get to all the members of the community, I'm not really sure. I'm not in.
Well, the, the planning board has noticed, right?
Absolutely, there's always adequate notice given by law.
Well, so when you've done the master plan process, you don't have to notice the whole town for these amendments that come out of, you know, out of that. Because there were notices as part of the master plan process. Fred took a little stricter line, he wanted noted, people noticed, he wanted all property owners noticed for certain types of changes.
Absolutely.
Even if it was covered by the master plan recommendations because, you know, it's too big of a change, you know, rezoning somebody's property. So I, I know for a while, there were a lot of notice activities going on for the different sections of the ordinance amendments. But again, you know, it's going to be a kind of a hit and run in the, in the newspaper or whatever, the notice on the bulletin board. Because, what was it, you know, 200 pages of changes? You weren't going to, you weren't going to get a sense of, oh yeah, I would setback for a car garage.
When we were zoning board, we didn't know. When Russell's commenting, we were.
We didn't know it.
We didn't, no one noticed us.
I'm not saying I didn't know it as a resident, I'm saying I didn't know it as a, as a longstanding.
I mean, there's no obligation to give you guys notice, but.
Because I remember, wait, I remember when Russell and I were sitting here.
Russell's doing our dates periodically.
And we had a particular hypothetical application. And we both were like, what? When you said five feet.
See now with the.
And I guess I'm going to take responsibility for that, maybe we, we should have notified the board
three hours to go there for a change.
That there were all these ordinances went, were changed or deleted or amended.
Or at least send us a document saying, things have been updated and changed here.
But it was everything though, you can't imagine.
You will be on my list.
It was everything from size.
It happens quite often.
But it changed things, it changed our, it changed our job.
Yes.
Right.
We were ruling with the whole news.
We were ruling, yeah, we're up here.
Deciding against old news.
With an applicant and lawyers and being recorded. And I'm like, hey, that's not allowed. And you correct me and say, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we changed the ordinance.
And then the attorneys, the board felt like what's going on.
I felt like a [BLEEP] with you. And it was like, what?
You're going on television.
Don't feel that way, they don't, don't pay any attention to.
Well, it just, I, you know, it's, I think they'll, you know.
No.
I walk around, I walk around my neighborhood every day, every day. And I am now seeing things that I walk by as, as a 20 year zoning board member, I'm like, really? Who approved that? Oh, maybe they've changed it and I don't know. I see a fence out here on a corner property, I see a single car garage being built right now on a property that I don't understand. I see a.
But remember, just because you see things being built, it's meeting God's approval.
I know, but.
I mean, that was.
But can you understand my frustration?
My job as the zoning officer when I was here in the eighties was driving down the street and going, wait, I didn't issue a permit for that. So I assume.
You should do what I do, I just hate.
Take away the reassortment. Take away the reassortment, but yeah, there are changes, there were changes that would have.
Would like to be empowered with, you know, the truth of what our ordinances actually mean up here and it's.
Especially the ones that highly affect us, like there might be 200 revisions overall, but five might pertain to the zoning board.
Over, you know. They don't, no, they all pertain to the zoning.
They all pertain to.
You know, it's whichever, whichever one's consistent. The applicant is going to be aggrieved by those changes and comes to you. So, yeah, you know, and we did have some that, that threw those people in front of you, yeah.
Some we eliminated completely, right? Donna, some we eliminated an entire ordinance where that, that changed a lot of applications.
Well, yes, but, and don't forget, I mean, in the zoning office, every day they're dealing with people coming in saying, I want to do this. They get told, well, you can't, but if you kind of tweak it this way or that way or shift this or cut it back. Then you don't have to go to the board, you, we can get you to comply. Is it the shed section? They did add that section about sheds, if you don't have a garage or a driveway, you're exempt from the building coverage and certain setback requirements.
There are three homes that I can, that I can cite in my neighborhood, none of them came before this board. So I don't know if they were applicants before the planning board or not.
Single family home wouldn't be.
But do they need relief? They don't have to come to you unless they're breaking the law.
Right, but based on what I understand, the ordinances and the design guidelines, these homes do not fit in what I would believe would be something that would be allowed.
Is it a home?
What's that?
I thought they were a garage.
The simple answer is to go down to the zone, to go down to the zoning office.
You know, I've done that a couple of times and I was told, oh, the zone, you know, the, yeah, the zoning changed, that, that's now allowed. So it's like, oh, okay, well, I'm sitting on the board here for all these 20 years, no one told me that would be nice. So I, again, it's about education and empowerment and making sure that everyone up here understands what they're hearing and what they're ruling on. And I, it, I just felt like we were not given those tools.
I think that's about it.
Yeah, I know, and that's good feedback because we are going to have more amendments coming in.
Yeah.
And there's a, and there's a brand new house, just new construction being built in my neighborhood right now where the garage is not five feet back from the front of the house. So do I, do I take a picture of it? And, you know, I've done that a couple of times and gotten it sort of in, it's not. And there's another house on that same block, actually right across the street, brand new construction. That has a second floor.
Getting a little too specific.
These are not applications that come before.
Yeah, I mean, these are, these are enforcement issues, a lot of them are enforcement issues that, that people should be taking, paying attention to.
As we know, this board has gotten into a lot of trouble with enforcement issues. We've had to clean up a lot of messes, which is actually, again, another thing that's really, really frustrating, really frustrating.
I had said.
And something that I actually don't think really should be our jobs.
I said 30 years ago.
When we're not.
Oh, hard they agree with that.
The issue is this, it's this, it's this. If you, I've been here a long time, I've seen, it was worse, it was a lot worse, okay? However, however, in an urban area like this, you could hire a lot more zoning, a lot more code enforcement officials, zoning officer, zoning officials to go out and comb the streets and they will come back with lists upon lists of violations. It's a matter of staffing, it's not a matter of.
And it's also time.
Yeah, it's time, staffing and the like.
They could get a violation notice.
I know, but here's the thing.
And then they have 10 days.
Here's the thing.
And then when that 10 days go by, they can go to court and then the court says.
How many hours have I dedicated to this board in 20 years? I don't want to hear about time. It's eight, it's eight o'clock right now on a Tuesday, time is very important to me. So I want to make sure that the city is matching the same commitment to time and detail that I am and the rest of this board is. And I don't see that all the time.
I had this argument many times.
I just, you know, so I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear about time.
We have people in positions that should be doing what Russell.
I run a full time business and I have time to show up here and listen and do that as a volunteer. And I'm hearing that my city government doesn't have the wherewithal to go out and police.
You have a half of an employee that does zoning enforcement.
Yes.
A half of an employee, they're shared with code.
And they're 1.4 miles large.
I, I understand it, and in 1987, I was the only person doing it. We didn't even have an in-house construction official. And I had to run around town literally every single day catching during a recession when no building was going on. And I was still catching people converting houses to rooming houses, building whole buildings without permits. It's tough. But yeah, the city has allocated resources in a certain way, you have half a zoning enforcement employee and a full time zoning officer.
Well, it makes our jobs really hard.
I, I, I get it, their jobs are hard too. I was there last year for three months, filling in until we got Vince and Morgan. And, you know, it's a nonstop stream of people coming up to the counter and then trying to catch the ones that skip the counter. You know, they go right to the code office or they go right to construction and try and pull a permit and then Morgan was like.
But I think Russell, what he's saying is, he's tired of hearing that they're here because they want forgiveness as opposed to.
It's been the same problem for 40 years, but yeah.
Goes back longer than that.
You can't, well. You, we can't help that you're going to see those people. They have the right to come and seek the variance to beg forgiveness. That's part of the process. We are trying, the city is trying to keep, catch them.
And I'm having multiple meetings all the time about.
They go to court and the court says, well, see if you can get your variance.
I just held one with an entire group of people about this same issue. This exact same issue. But honestly, I could say the city manager is working with his people and they can do the best they can, but we're always going to be faced with this issue.
Always.
Always.
In an intense, developed town like this, small city like this, with the development patterns and the intensity of the population, you're always going to have this. Because there are people who are hell bent on violating the law. They're going to do what they want to do and worry about it.
Especially when they feel that they've spent so much money on a particular piece of property and they feel that they should have the right to do whatever the hell they please. And that's the bottom line, Jack.
Okay, well, that, whatever these, whatever their reasoning is, their reasoning is. I can tell you, you go to Liquid, you go to Long Branch, you go to Red Bank, you go to Matteawan.
Damn.
Any, any urban area, any of the established towns.
Oh, it doesn't have to be an urban area, you should see what the zoning officer goes through in Defford.
Yeah, I know, I, Atlantic City, anywhere, you're going to, this is a never ending problem. It'll never, it never gets solved, it can only be treated, but you never cure the disease because people are going to constantly be doing it. Do you know, I mean, you look at the non-conform, you got a ton of non-conforming uses. If, if we wanted to be real strict, we'd have to come here with armed guards. Because, because we would be turning down a whole lot of people because they can't establish how the use was legal at one time.
There's nothing in the files anyway, so.
So.
Well, no, I mean.
There's some.
Some pretty good records.
Yeah, there's some, but the point is, is before you can claim that you have a non-conform, a valid non-conform, you. Yeah, there's some, but the point is, is before you can claim that you have a nonconform, a valid nonconforming, you should have to prove that at one point in time it was a conforming use.
Or predates zoning.
Or predates the zoning. So if you can't prove that, you can't prove the validity of the nonconformity. But we made a policy decision 25, 30 years ago that the last major overhaul was, of everything was about at the end of the eighties. And we said, okay, if you can prove that you were in existence in 1990, 1988, you're going to get a pass essentially. Because it was a legislative, a legislative policy that it had to be because there's no way you could go back and prove or disprove. And we would just have people going crazy, you know, with, with a lot of the houses that have, that have apartments in there. Fortunately, the redevelopment trends are, and they're, and the investment in the city by, you know, you, all of your new people that came in subsequent to the 1980s and so on. Is that you're taking those houses that had three and four and five units and turning them back into single family homes again.
Or rooming houses.
Or rooming houses and turning them back into conforming uses. So it, it's happening by citizen activity itself. That helps it. Yes, reinvestment. Cause if you came here in the 1980s, first of all, I wouldn't, I wouldn't come here in the 1980s because there was no business. I, my office, my, my office was in Long Branch at that point.
I was here with a police radio.
Yeah, and I was the Long Branch Planning Board Attorney from 80 to 90 and my office was there. There was nothing going on in Asbury Park. There was absolutely nothing. And, and then in the mid.
Well, we had stuff going on.
Well. Not, not to the rest of us land use attorneys. I know your zoning, your planning board sometimes met once a year.
You're kidding.
Absolutely.
Zoning board probably only met once a year. The planning board met a little more frequently, but I think it was mostly hearings on the land development regulations that Dave and I wrote.
Yeah. Yeah.
But yeah, I was, I was very busy as a zoning officer, driving around town, catching people who were doing renovations. Carrying single family homes into boarding houses, rooming houses, multifamily dwellings. You know, in the R1 district, so not allowed. And, um. You know, on the east side, it was worse because we had a lot of the old hotels. And they weren't, uh, you know, attracting tourists. So they were just trying to jam it full of transient residents and, um.
A lot of them had single room occupancies and.
Yep. Um, so, so, um.
So, yeah.
You are going to get cases that are, yes, we violated the ordinance. The court says we have to come here and try and get our variance. And if what they're doing, again, you're applying the test. Is it hardship? Is there, is there public benefit? What's the negative criteria? What's the impact on the zoning board? Right?
Follow the criteria.
Is your evidence credible as to how, what those impacts are? Like, again, we built a thing. It's just like everybody else in the neighborhood. Well, no, that's not really your neighborhood. It's not architecturally compatible. It's not historic element. It's not, you go through your criteria and you say, how did you come up with that rationale? That's how I feel. So that's subjective. Um, or, you know, well, that's what's in the market. That's what people want. Are you a real estate professional? Because if you're not expertise, that is not your expert area. You cannot testify, right? Your evidence has to be credible. And then you say, sorry, you haven't met the criteria.
Just apply the criteria. Just do your best to apply it uniformly. If somebody has already done something and they're asking for forgiveness, they did it, not you. You apply the criteria. And if it's a tough decision, I understand tough decisions. But apply the criteria. If you feel that they would have been entitled to the variance if they had come to you in the first place, fine. If you don't, you don't. And then it'll just be dealt with accordingly. It's just, those are the facts. That's the way it works.
Oh, I thought of another site plan. It was bothering me. I knew that we had a couple of site plan applications.
Yeah, I mean, it happens. It doesn't happen often because there's not a lot of open land. If you're going to have a site plan application here for any type of development, it's usually tail purchase, consolidation, tear downs.
Or the type of, right, the type of renovation or construction that actually involves site development. Yeah.
But when we get those, we'll let you know. You know, they're few and far between. You know, primarily you're just going to see these variance applications, nonconforming use interpretations. Uh, and all that. That's, that's just the nature of the zoning board. Planning board's a lot easier because everything's permitted or it wouldn't be there. Your job.
But they still have the same struggle with design exceptions.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they, they're not just passed really nilly, but it's not like they're coming in there and they got to convince you for a use variance with five out of seven members, you know.
Oh, that was another thing I wanted to definitely hit on. So, um, remember some types of relief require that super majority. You need five positive votes to grant the variance. So that's use variance is an actual use D1. Uh, expansion of nonconforming use, D2, that's a type of use variance. Do we even have conditional uses anymore?
Rarely do you see a conditional use.
But any, any of those D variances, uh, the height D variances, um.
Define for the board specifically what a nonconforming use means and an expansion of that.
Okay. Section 68 of the land use law, nonconforming uses. A nonconforming use is a use that at one time was permitted under old zoning ordinances or predate zoning ordinances, which would be way, way back. That ultimately was converted into a nonconforming use because the ordinance changed and doesn't permit that use anymore. It's that simple. Okay.
Well, that's, that's the nonconformity.
That's the nonconformity. Okay.
To get, just to elaborate on that a little bit, Jack. So you have like a single family home that had X amount of bedrooms, then all of a sudden it became a multifamily home.
Right. Yeah, all of a sudden you got.
And what zone is it in? Is it in the single family zone?
If it's in an R1 zone and you got four units in there. And it's an old, it's a house. Originally was a house. Okay, well, okay, well, we're, we're.
Some of the homes were huge at one time.
We're grandfathered. Well, how are you grandfathered? Well, uh, we've been a four family unit for 20 years. Well, okay.
That's not that long.
We look back and find out that that was an R1 zone since the 1930s and it's never changed. So then you're going to have to prove to us technically that pre 1930s, there were four families in there. Nobody's going to be able to do that. Other than that, you, you, you have to come in for a declaration of nonconforming use. Zoning officer got themselves in trouble historically in this town because they overstepped their authority. Only time that the zoning officer can issue a certificate for not, for a valid nonconforming use, a zoning permit, is if the application for that permit is made within one year from the date that the ordinance changed it from a conforming use to a nonconforming use. Anytime thereafter, the only entity that has the authority to issue nonconforming use status or a permit is the zoning board of adjustment. You can go to the zoning board of adjustment at any time, but the zoning officer has that limited window of power one, from one year from when it's created until they apply for the nonconformity. If they issue a zoning permit beyond that one year, it's an ultra virus act. It's not a negligent act. It's, it's beyond the scope of their authority. Okay. And we had situations on numerous occasions where zoning officers have issued those. And then the applicants take them and they relied on them and then to their detriment and started the work and so on. And they can come in, they can argue what's called an estoppel theory that says, hey, I got this permit from so and so. I relied on it, so I did the work.
Or even worse, the construction department came in and gave them a CO.
Right, right. Well, there was a time when I started here that the construction department did not talk to the zoning department. And I said, how can you not have a matrix? When somebody comes in for a construction permit, it should, for this type of repairs or additions or anything like that, it should go over and get a zoning permit. If the zoning officer signs off on it, fine, then issue the permit for the construction. But if they don't, and they say, wait a minute, that's not a four family house. That's an R1 zone. We have no record of that. Well, we got a tax bill. The tax records are not indicative of whether or not it was converted, whether or not it's a legal nonconforming use. Okay. So we run into that. We got to a point at one time where the zoning officer who was here many years ago was not permitted to issue zoning permits unless they spoke to Susan Gru or me first.
And when, back in the days where we have them as a planner.
Right. And, and that's how bad it got because zoning permits were being issued. Somebody can go in and just say zoning permit and they got a zoning permit. Like, what are you doing? Well, there's four families there. Well, I know there's factually four families there, but it's not, you can't issue this. First of all, you know, you don't have the power because that was created, that would have had to be created 30 years ago. Yeah, because the ordinance changed 30 years ago or 40 years ago. What, what in-depth analysis did you do on the property? I just saw that it was four families in there. I said, I got a mistake here. Got the wrong person in the job. So that's, that's what a nonconforming use is.
So an expansion of nonconforming use is a, is a delicate issue. And so there's probably an entire chapter in that book.
Yeah.
What constitutes expansion.
Same criteria as the original use variance application. You have to, they have to establish the same negative, positive and negative criteria for a use variance for an expansion.
So we've had cases where people have argued that what we're doing is so small, insignificant, benign. So there's some case law that pertains to that. Um, and it's based on partially an estoppel case. And, um, you know, again, the board has to weigh the credibility of the evidence being presented by the applicant about what they're doing. What it is they want to do and how, what those impacts are. And again, you guys are the deciders of how substantial an impact is. How much you think it's going to affect the neighborhood, the zone plan. So, um. You have to deliberate that. Listen to the, to the witnesses, assess their credibility of their evidence, what it's based on, and come to your conclusions. Do you want to talk about how that goes on the record and how it's important?
No, I don't want, I don't want to get into the weeds because.
So, so, yeah.
I want to keep it as simple as I can.
Some are very plain. I'm adding a dwelling unit. I'm expanding the floor area. I'm changing something from a vacant storage space to now it's going to be, uh, you know, a kitchen. It's a change in intensity, change in density, change in volume. All of those things affect whether it's substantial. And constitutes expansion. So this is very simple, right? Physical expansion. I'm putting on an addition, obviously bigger. Sometimes our nonconforming uses are also nonconforming structures, right? They don't have the right amount of setback. So if they're putting on an addition, they're further affecting that setback deviation. That can be viewed as, you know, being a negative expansion of the use as well as the structure. So, um. You know, you have to take that whole, look at the whole thing and evaluate each aspect of that criteria.
Are we going to be seeing ADUs come before this board?
No.
Not at all, not on any level?
No.
They're all going to be before city council.
But we've had an argument about an ADU.
Michelle has had, uh, some conversations and, um. She feels that the way the ordinance is written that permits ADUs, um, there's no avenue that would put them before the zoning board.
Okay.
Yeah.
What if they want to put the ADU closer to the side yard setback? Or what if it goes over lot coverage by 100 feet? What if it changes FAR? Are all those things being considered? Are all of those impacts being changed in our current ordinances?
So again, the.
And then doesn't it mean also that you're becoming like a two family to a three family?
It doesn't change.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't.
But.
Those are some of the, some of the things about the way the ADU ordinance is, is written. It is not considered a multifamily, doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be registered with the state as a multifamily. Can only be a one or two family dwelling and an ADU. Um, and because it's in a separate building, it's not in the one or two family house. It's a separate building. That's part of it, even though we do have multifamilies registered as with the state as multifamilies where there are two separate buildings. I mean, we haven't seen it yet. I haven't seen one yet. She's been able to either convince applicants to fully comply, so they're not coming here. Or they've been fully compliant, so that's why they're not coming here.
Are ADUs strictly separate buildings?
Yes.
You can't construct one inside a.
Inside an existing dwelling, correct. That's why it's accessory.
Exactly.
It's like accessory structure dwelling, not just accessory dwelling. So, but yeah, it has to be a separate building. And can only be associated with a one or two family house. So if you have a three family and one an ADU, no. Again, I don't know why that doesn't come here as a use variance. Seems to be a mechanism missing here, but I.
I would think ultimately they would have to at some point.
Well, you can easily have an appeal process. You can't just be denied process.
Right.
So I, I'm not sure.
And everyone has their day at the zoning board, right?
Yeah.
So.
Someday you might get a question on an interpretation of that. You might. It all depends on, is fact sensitive?
But yeah, if anybody tells you, oh, this, this would be, could be construed as an ADU, that's probably a pretty far reach because yeah, very strictly, it has to be a separate structure, can't be associated with anything larger than a one or two family dwelling.
Can we talk a moment about front balconies?
What about them?
Is it an expansion of use? Is it a nonconforming use? Is it permissible in the historic district?
It depends. I have to, you know, you have to evaluate all the criteria that are happening with that particular site. What's the architectural, you know, significance of the building? If it's in an R1, two or three district, right? Because it's going to be subject to the community design regulations. What is the use? Is it a permitted use? Is it a nonconforming use? You know, if it's a, a single family house and it's in the R1 zone, that's permitted use. You'd go to the zoning office and say, I want a second floor balcony on the front of my house. Morgan has to evaluate the architectural aspects of it for conformance with the community design regulations. I'm going to say nine out of 10 of these are going to come back as, yeah, no, because we either have a front setback issue. Cause when you put something on top of your front porch, you no longer get that exemption for the front setback. We measure the front setback line from the front property line to the building wall, not the porch. So if you put something on top of the porch, and, and most of our existing buildings, you know, the front porch is in the setback. So if you put something on top of the porch, now you're in the smart yard setback.
Cause that end of that balcony becomes the front wall. Is that what you're saying?
I think that's how they're interpreting it. Whatever you're putting up there. And again, depending on what it is they're doing. So is it railing? Is it, um, is there other stuff? How, how far does it extend? Is it a nonconforming structure? Is it a nonconforming use? Are the, you know, the architectural design components compatible with the community design regulations? Is it a nonconforming structure? There's a nonconforming structure. Okay. Um, so that's what they're evaluating and deciding whether, yes, you can get a permit or no, you need to get relief from the zoning board.
Yeah, remember, that's the threshold. Those are usually going to get a secondary application, which is if you turn, if you come out against them, they're going to ask for the variance and then that's a whole other set of criteria. You may very well say, we like this. Who knows? But yeah, it's usually a two step process.
But a second floor balcony on the back of the house? You know, again, it might meet the architectural criteria because it's a weaker standard on the back. It may comply with setbacks, you know, it may not have a problem on the sides or the rear. Or they may be able to, you know, position it so it complies with the side yard setbacks and they have plenty of rear yard setback. And whether or not there's a problem with, uh, you know, coverage, building coverage, if it's over a, a one story part of the building in the back, it's not going to increase building coverage because that's already a solid. So, you know, there may be situations where. So, you know, there may be situations where one in the backyard, there would be no, you know, zoning regulation that would, that prevent it.
So many times, let me ask a question, Donna, Jack. Many times we get an application for a particular thing, right? But when they go out there and they review the property, there may be four existing situations on that property. And then all of a sudden, that, we're really just reviewing that one thing, but those four things that were existing problems or variances that were never approved, all of a sudden, we forgive those all at once.
So are you talking about non-conforming use related to setbacks?
Setbacks and
Or lot size?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, that's quite, again, urban area, smaller house, smaller lots. Quite often, all the houses that were built 50, 60, 70 years
But is that like a grandfather dating?
Yes, they're, 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 they're prior non-conformities. They're not illegal in the sense that somebody did it. They didn't just go build a house now and make, and violate the setbacks. It's, it's not a use situation, it's a bulk situation, that's all. And there's lots of them all over the place. Pre-existing non-conformities, it's, we see that, you see Donna's report, she'll always outline all of them. She gives them to you. But you can tell
Are we reviewing those or are we just ignoring that?
Not really, not really. No, I never really get excited about those. You know, some people say, why don't you put a whole big thing in your resolution? I don't have to. They've been that way. The board knows they're there. The, the house, if, if they're not going to grant the relief that they're requesting now, it's not because, they're not going to rely on those pre-existing non-conforming setbacks for the basis for the denial of the application that's before them now. It wouldn't make any sense.
So why bring them up to
Because they have to be pointed out to you.
They're informational and they may have, again, you know, if it's a a lot that's too narrow.
Right.
Right, and there's an existing side yard setback, deviation. What are, and what they're doing is going to carry that setback variation longer in the lot. It's relevant. But you're not changing the house. You're not going to change the existing condition of the house. We're going to focus on what the difference, the new thing is.
Right.
Can this work? Can what they're proposing work and not look disproportionate, not throw everything out of whack?
And like you guys rightly do, like, well, so is the neighbor's building, you know, going to be obstructed by the new construction, you know, negative impact? But yeah, there's, I guess there's two schools of thoughts because I've seen other towns where they, they make a point of granting those variances.
But that's not our job, though. We are aware of it, but it's not for us to focus on, right?
Even if you granted the variance, all you're doing is, it would be like you're doing the
Um, those approvals are unlimited uh time to do things unless we apply a time limit.
And we have that ordinance.
But a variance is forever.
But you put on your resolutions, Jack, that they have to do something within a year, right?
That's Chris the city has an ordinance that says that if you don't, you lose your variance. I I have my doubts about the enforceability of that, but it's an ordinance and I can't ignore the law that the city has passed. So I put it in, but.
So that wouldn't hold up in court.
I I'd rather doubt that to be the case because you're essentially saying we're giving you a temporary variance. Because the only you give a and if you there is such a thing as a temporary variance. Okay, um, but that's not the case for these. These are these variances granted run with the land. The only time that they're going to be affected and variances last in perpetuity. If you exercise it, it stays with the land, then consider more of a conforming use because they establish the criteria that they're entitled to the variance. If they don't do the project and the law changes again for that district and the and the and the standards become more conservative. Then you have grounds to say you should have acted on your variance because now you have you haven't built the house with the 10 foot versus the required 15. But now we have 20 foot setbacks. It's a little different. You have to come back.
When is a use considered abandoned?
The only well, oh, that is a whole other can of worms.
It's a whole chapter of law.
Abandonment of uses and not abandonment of nonconforming uses is one thing abandonment of variances is another. There has to be outward signs that there was a clear cut intent to abandon. Uh, and they say, well, it's subjective. No, it's really not because everybody that comes in here and says, I didn't abandon my variance. Nobody's going to come in here and say, I intended to abandon my variance, but they wouldn't be asking you to extend it. It's so they could say all they want, words are hollow. You got to show me by your actions, what did you do? You know, what did you do? You know, if you tore down the building, you're in trouble.
Well, the house has been sitting there, say vacant for three years. It used to be a three family.
Yes.
Does that convert now to?
No, no, because if the house classic case is Bobinsky, okay? It was a tack farm up in northern New Jersey, Bergen County way back. I think it was Bergen. Uh, it's a nonconforming use, having a horse farm with a with a tack shop. Okay, but if you went there, it was farmers still maintained it, had the building look the way it looked. Had an old sign on a window, you went inside, it still had counters. They just weren't active. It was a band was that way for 20 years. Court said, no, it still looks like a horse farm. It still looks like a tack shop. There was no intent to abandon. Nonuse is not the dispositive criteria for abandonment. So if it's a three family, it still looks okay. It's not boarded up, it's not falling down.
What if it is boarded up?
Well, if it's boarding down and falling down, then you've got outward signs possibly depending upon the facts. It's going to be dependent upon the facts because then it's maybe here.
The city can command the unoccupied buildings to be.
Yeah, city has an ordinance that said if a building is not occupied for X amount of time, it's considered abandoned. That ordinance is absolutely unenforceable on court of law.
Say a hotel was converted to uh some type of spa.
Okay.
Wait. Converted.
We don't know how it was converted. And it's now a spa.
We don't know whether it used to be a hotel.
Hotel, you can't rent a room, you can't stay there.
You can stay there, but it's not a hotel anymore. It's a spa.
So how is that not also a hotel?
Uh, that's a good question, but. And I don't want to refer to any situations.
Y'all gone?
But.
So um sometimes uses are not simply one thing, right? Um, a spa could be an accessory incidental activity at a hotel. If adding a spa to a hotel.
No, the rooms are now.
A nonconforming use, it might be an expansion of a nonconforming use. Did they convert or add this other use to their nonconforming use without getting a zoning permit?
So you can get a treatment and spend the night?
Quite often hotels are small, right? Especially modern day, even in the early days.
A lot of depends what about what else?
So it's not an abandoned use of a hotel.
That depends on it's it's fact sensitive.
What else is happening there? What is what is actually going on? Are they still advertising rooms for a lot of things also hinge on as far as abandonment?
It seems so subjective to consider what's abandoned, though, is my point.
Now, well, you got to look at the evidence. You have to see outward that they could they're going to sit there. Everybody's going to sit on this side of this table and tell you they did not intend to abandon the nonconforming use or they wouldn't be here. Okay, fine, now show me. Show me.
Yeah, am I still advertising rooms for rent?
You have a mercantile license for a hotel and all that. Has that been kept up to date?
You still have rooms.
Yeah, do you still have rooms for rent and all that? If they still maintain the hotel features and they have the mercantile license. It's not a matter of whether or not anybody's renting any rooms in there, but if they're still paying the licenses, they're still operating. They're still in the old phone book or wherever you look now for a phone number online and you know, Google it, whatever. Um, you know, if all that evidence is there, you say, okay, it's no different than the Bobinsky's farm tack shop. The fact that they're not using it does not make it abandoned. Time is not the dispositive issue. They go in there, they rip out the kitchens. It's a three family house. They're claiming they got a three family house. There's no more kitchens in there. The windows are broken and everything else they can say, well, we were going to redo it, but we ran out of money and there was a recession and there was COVID and there was this. Say, well, that's up, then you decide whether or not you buy that. If you buy it, okay, if you don't, you abandon it. Why how? Look at the outward signs. They're clearly there factually that you have not kept up the the nonconformity of this property. You know, they may have maybe a COVID situation. Who knows what it really is? You know, if you really dug in where a lot of them come in and they say, well, our contractor. How many of them bring their contractor in and tell you that the contractor? They always blame the contractor, right? You hear it all the time. We told our contract, the contractor went down, did this, and all of a sudden this came this way. I guarantee you, you subpoenaed those contractors. They, if you got them in here, all the major, the vast majority of them are going to say, I never said that. I never told them that. And then you got disparity between the two witnesses. But how far are we going to go? I mean, in terms of how how much in depth are you going to take the thing? We had one guy who was down the beachfront who pressed my buttons at the planning board on something one time. And I said, you, I want to see the contract for your sale of the property. Who did this attorney represent? You know, I said, I want to see your contract because you're telling me you bought it this way and all that. There has to be a representation of the contract. I did real estate law for a long time. I said, now, if you, well, I said, if you if you keep pushing this button, I'm going to make you bring that contract in. And if necessary, we'll have the chair subpoena the attorney that represented you. We're going to find out what the attorney put in that contract. But it's up to you. If you want me to go down that road, I will. So you may want to reconsider your testimony and he reconsidered his testimony. Because I was going to call him to task. Because if I caught him in a lie and perjured himself, it would have been a problem. He ultimately dismissed the application.
John, do you have any uh interesting little? You've been quiet.
I was I was up at six heading the trend this morning for meetings all day, so.
Got it.
I'm tired.
Okay, sorry, not trying to bore anybody or turn you out.
This has been very helpful. Sorry for my my lack of participation.
And of course, we we set a whole week. Donna and I, we decided we decide we're going to keep this as simple as we could. Because it's, I've been doing this for 47 years.
Yeah, we can talk for days.
We can, this is what I do for a living and have done it for a living for a long time. I still do. The one challenging thing about Asbury Park is even at 75, having been practicing for 47 years. Every month I come before these boards, I get hit with a new question and a challenge that I don't know the answer to. And that's what keeps it interesting. Okay, there are times I wish I say, I, I want it to be routine, but then I know. The challenge is is you keep constantly expanding your knowledge. This is tough stuff.
Advocants keep.
It's tough.
Find a new ways to slice the bread and.
I'm trying to, I try to give you just enough so that you can make intelligent decisions. The wrong decision isn't the worst decision. It's indecision. So if you make a wrong decision, so what? That's what appeals are for, okay? So my job is to make sure that I get you the criteria that you need. I'm available anytime to answer whatever questions you have. And if I don't know the answer, I'll go find one and give it to you. You have my cell number, you call me anytime you like. Um, yeah, I yeah, I get it. It's it's tough stuff. It's still challenging after 47 years, you know.
Before we conclude, though, maybe you can help with the deliberation process a little bit for the board and how they.
Okay, when you, yeah, when you're done, what you should do is every decision has to be based on what you find to support your decision. You should always try and give me one or two reasons why you voted the way you voted. You don't have to say, well, I disagree with the planner. You just have to say, well, I find that based on the evidence totality, this is how I see this. That, you know, it's been established that this is this and you vote yes. Or it's not been established and I find that to be uh most relevant to my decision. It's on the record. So then in your resolutions, you'll always see I create some findings of fact. Because I can't, if we go out on appeal, I learned a long time ago when I was a young attorney. That if I create this beautiful resolution with all these grandiose findings of fact. I had a judge lay me out in front of a whole room of attorneys saying, you know, you can't do that. And really laid into me and said, well, let you go this time. You ever do that again, I'll sanction you. It has to be the findings of fact by the board, not by you. Okay, so I mean, I can embellish the facts to support your votes, but they have to come from you. If I just get a no, 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 or all yeses without some reasoning, I have no factual basis. Now, I've argued that I put them in there and then you review the resolutions and you have you adopt those resolutions. So by adopting it, you're agreeing with how I stated the facts. But that's really not, that's a backdoor way of me trying to protect every the decision. I really should get some facts. You don't have to go crazy. You don't have to go into these grandiose sets of facts. Just give me some supportive rationale for your decision. That's all. And then and then you vote the way you feel. And as I said, if you vote right or wrong, it doesn't matter to me. Because, you know, I mean, I certainly want you to vote the correct way. But whatever it is, if you make a mistake and you get an appeal and we get reversed. Next inning will step up to the plate and swing at the balls when they pitch them. That's all. Don't don't worry, don't ever let that bother you. You know, I mean, conscious wise, you make your own decisions up, but don't worry about a a decision that might get appealed and reversed. If it happens, it happens. It happens to everybody. Your record, Asbury Park's record over the 34 or 35 years I've been here. Um, in the beginning, I wasn't, I was, I had a real bad batting average on appeals. Over the years, they they've held up. More importantly, we've only had a handful of appeals, which means that the decisions of the board are good ones. That that tells me if we're doing a good job. If we get a lot of appeals, that tells me we've got a problem. Okay, it isn't a matter of win or lose them. It's a matter of how many appeals. We're doing our job. People may walk out unhappy, but if we're not getting a lot of appeals, we're doing a good job. And I think I think I've seen the boards go from where they were in 95 until where they are in 25. Uh, and last number, many years, the boards have consistently done a good job. It's this is the hardest board to be a member of because you have to make the tough decisions. And you, I get to go home to Tom's River, even though I was, I grew up here, okay? I don't have to go around town and see people out in the streets and have them say, walk up to me when I'm going to the dry cleaner. Why did you vote against me? Because they'll never have boundaries. They're always going to bother you, right? An easy answer, anybody at it, by the way, ever comes up to you and says, I got this application. You say, my board attorney has instructed us not to discuss anything that's past, pending, or future. Because that creates conflict of interest. If you have a problem, call Jack Sopka. Let him yell at me, that's what I get paid for. I don't mind. Speaking of conflicts of interest. When you, you're up on a board, you're there to make the tough decisions. True conflict of interest is simple, financial, friends, family. If you're a member of the church and you're an active congregant of the church or congregation, fine. Indirect conflicts is if somebody's a good friend and somebody or somebody talks to you. They tainted you at a party or something like that, that can be an indirect conflict of interest. Anytime you have a conflict of interest, when in doubt, first of all, call me. We'll discuss it. I always take the conservative approach. When in doubt, I'll tell you to step down. Not worth having a case and somebody accused you of being unethical or having a conflict. They're not paying you enough for sitting in those seats to go through that. Uh, other than that, unless you've got a ethical objection to sitting on the case. Should sit on it and vote on it one way or the other. Call the tough ones, even if they're borderline strikes of balls.
But a conflict could also exist if, say, they are working with a professional that you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I get friends, families, business associates, commercial relationships, anything. You know what? All of our parents taught us the difference between right and wrong. And we don't have to have somebody tell us when we're wrong. When we do something wrong, there's that little voice in your head that that tells you you did something wrong. If you think you've got something that's developing that could be a conflict, step aside. It's the easiest thing to do, just like when they ask me about ethics. John went to law school. They gave you this ethics book this big. In the end, it always turns out to be, what is your gut reaction to this? Should you touch this or not? And if the answer is no, chances are you shouldn't do it. It's and that's the simple rule that I've worked with for my entire career. And that'll keep us all out of trouble. Okay, I'm always going to tell you to step aside.
Or within 200 feet of the property.
Oh, sure, then you have, then you're, then you're not a noninterested party because you're within the 200 foot distance. And that's the basics. In a nutshell, in a two hour nutshell.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Nobody, nothing else?
Yeah, please.
We can keep going.
No, no, but call me. If you have questions, do not hesitate to call me.
I do have one question. So if somebody does come in front for like multiple things, can you approve some others or?
Sure.
How to like conditions specifically?
Individually determined.
Each case rises or falls on its own merits.
You will see the same attorneys. You will see the same architects. I mean, it's more so at the planning board, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, and many of the applications will seem similar.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, because again, zoning board, you're only dealing with certain types of cases. Spatulas and nonconforming use, use density. Um, and those, you know, incidental setback bulk things. Um, so um. You may get a feeling of repetition, but everyone is on its own. Evaluate and get all those criteria, credibility of the evidence, credibility of the witness. And again. We don't get them like next to each other, right? Applications are happening all over the city. It's rare for us to get applications in this, like literally in the same neighborhood on the same street. Um, so those those simple differences will totally affect how you evaluate your application.
Well, not so much different applications, but like if one person comes home with like multiple variances or multiple issues where they're not necessarily.
Applicant or attorney, talk about the applicants themselves?
Um, either.
Well, the attorneys are just, people seek them out because they feel they're good at what they do and they get good results.
Right, no, I'm more so speaking about like if there's different variances that are needed or like, you know, multiple variances for different things on the property. Like I want a pool and there's impervious coverage issues, but then I also want that deck or whatnot. Um, essentially like if they put it as one applicant.
You mean like if the same person comes back multiple times?
For the same problem.
Or they're just here. One, if there's just one person here for multiple reasons, whether it's over the course of a year or like the same meeting. Um, like what's, is it in the way that they presented that we have to?
No, we've had applications where, you know, somebody did something, they got an approval, they built their thing. And then they came back a couple of years later and said, I want to do this thing now. You know, again, you just from scratch.
Within the same application he's going out.
They're asking for multiple points of relief within one application.
Correct, so if they were to hand me, hand us something, like this is what I want to do. Based on how they're submitting that application, like, do we have the leeway to say yes to this, no to that? Or is it based on the application, do we approve it?
Ask them.
Each individual, like the setback may be valid, right? Based on what they're doing, but the coverage might be too much.
Yeah, you can say this.
Might be too tall.
After the, you say, look, I I hear you, okay? I'm okay with this.
Or the whole thing is just.
Yeah, but I'm not okay with that, okay? Or and then you're giving them a chance to say, why don't we go back to the drawing board? Possibly come back without those things. If you get a consensus from the board, good attorney sitting over here is going to get a consensus, okay? You start to see a case going in a certain direction. You see that three out of the four things are okay, but that one fourth thing, putting that, but example, pool equipment. Putting it six inches under the neighbor's window just isn't going to work. Uh, I'd say, I need, I need five minutes. I talked to my client, we got to come back with a new new design. We're 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 ahead on three counts, but we're going to get nailed on this other one. And if you insist on the whole thing being voted on at once, you're going to lose because they're going to turn the whole package down because of this one feature. So that's something, you know, you can, you tell them, you know, you're you're in the position of authority. You tell them how you feel and.
That's where the compromising comes in a lot.
Right, but it's because the combination of things is like.
Yeah, the totality of circumstances, yeah. Yeah.
Sure. That do get a lot of.
Yeah, you'll get a lot of that, yeah.
It's sometimes nine variances, all in the same application.
Yeah, I just don't know if we have or if we had the latitude to say yes to it. Or if it was strictly based on how they wanted it.
Yeah, you could say, look, if you're asking us that if they get, they push it.
Some negotiations.
Yeah, 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 there, there's a little give and take here, okay? There's an art to it as well as a science, okay? Um, but again, if you see the package and you say, look, I'm I'm, be straight with them. Say, I'm comfortable with this, comfortable with the swimming pool. I'm not comfortable with this. And if they push the button, you can say, then, okay, I'll vote on all of them. And then they'll get a turn down. And if the lawyer sitting next to them is smart, he would, he or she would call an adjournment and said, it's time to.
But you can also say, you know, you know, I'm good with the setback thing. I might have a problem on this side. Is there a way to, like, if we do something and that eliminates the setback problem? Yeah, it might increase the building coverage, you know, is that, that might be a more acceptable trade off based on, again, what our hardship is on our lot. Because again, most of these are going to be, I I can't make my property any bigger.
Right.
The house is where it is. These are hardships.
Yeah, quite often you may recommend, what you might recommend may be an additional variance. But it's a better design, it's a better layout on the land. It's it's much better from a zoning and planning perspective. So.
Doesn't impact the neighbors.
Doesn't impact, it's a very minor situation. As a matter of fact, it's an improvement. Why not? It's a win win. It's a win for the applicant, it's a win for the city and the neighbors. Sure. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so um 9:05. Uh, you guys want to call it? Do you want to do another one of these in two months? Our law's going to change?
Well, we got to, we got to figure out how to get everyone the notice out to the public. Quite often the public is noticed they don't attend. But if you're noticed, I would think that you'd go to the planning board and make comments as individual citizens. Can't go to the planning board and make a comment and say, well, I'm a member of the zoning board, blah, blah, blah. Say, stop right there, you know? Tell, you're you live in the community. What is it you don't like about these ordinances, changes that are coming across? Or what are you, what do you say, what do you want to say about it? But you can't represent that it's a zoning board, you represent as an individual property owner. Still the same net difference, but it doesn't want to look like.
It's not a question of whether I like them or not. It's a question of having the information and the tools to be able to do this job properly in in profession.
How often are we supposed to review the zoning offices, Donna? I really don't know the answer to that question.
So the board does its annual review of its actions.
I know, we did that.
But you you guys are basically left out of the the process for ordinance amendments, master plan.
I was involved as the chairman.
Citizens, right. Um, as part of the activities that the city undertook with doing the ordinance amendments. They wanted to include you, but obviously not the entire entire world. Um, and and like I said, we're going to, we're going to have ordinance amendments this year, hopefully by the end of the year. Um, I can certainly, you know, keep you guys apprised of what the scope of those are. So that um when they do get to planning board or governing body, if you have, you know.
Yeah.
Opinions about them, great. If not, you know, at least you have the information, oh, I know that's coming. We're going to make the setback for Dorados 10 feet.
The annual report?
We're going to outlaw second floor bathrooms on the front of the building.
Pay more attention to it.
Fences right up on the right away.
Fences what?
Right on the right away, in the backyard, six feet.
Eighteen inch setback instead of one foot setback. Um, I I think actually one of the things is um it'd be counting swimming pools as impervious coverage. So that may be of interest because I suspect that would generate a lot more activity here.
That's interesting.
Yes.
I didn't hear that.
It's on the list.
Oh, that doesn't, that sounds like a pain.
But again, it's one of these things, you know, we're seeing activity in the zoning office where, you know, Michelle is kind of going, wow. Everybody's backyard is pool.
There are a lot of people putting pools in.
It's their whole backyard.
Yeah.
When I was growing up, no one in this town had pools.
Well, I mean, that's also a modern phenomenon.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's just, it's trends, it's it's all.
Well, that also came with a whole COVID situation that you're staycation now, right?
Right, yeah.
Plus, not everybody goes to the beach. Some people want a pool in their backyard.
Why do you live in Asbury Park? Um, so so, yeah, so that might be a thing that might surprise you as you start to see applications going, why are we dealing with pools? Yeah, um, but there's some other things that are also just administrative. We're going to tighten up things like the how long a zoning permit is valid for and how long, you know, other approvals are valid for. And that you need a zoning permit basically for everything. Right now it says only in association with a building permit and you need a zoning permit, whether you need a building permit or not for.
Doesn't Asbury have an ordinance if you do a title transfer, the T O T includes a zoning permit or a review of the zoning file?
It's a policy.
Okay.
It's not a regulation. So again, things like that are are going to get further cleaned up.
Just for curiosity, who's pushing the number of his pool change?
I I don't know. I don't know.
Is that the, is that the slow of the production of pools going in in town? Or is it really from a runoff point of view or what's the basis of that?
I I think, again, it's part of the.
It's probably water, right?
If our whole backyard, the lot is.
It's stormwater management is pushing that.
To have an impact on the head of stormwater.
Stormwater.
Runoff is happening in our block. So I again, I've only heard the request to add it to the list. I don't know where it originates fully or what the trigger was. Like who said, you know, we should be looking at this.
It would have to be stormwater management.
It's possible a stormwater.
Well, as a pool owner, I can tell you it's not the pool, it's the hardscape, it's the, it's the decking around it.
Well, again, there's a couple of schools of thought on this because every town regulates it differently. Um, some towns do count the pool, the entire pool surface toward impervious coverage, others only count the coping. Um.
But some people want to put an entire, their entire backyard as as.
Right, or, you know, they may be very house large on a normal lot. And so how does that affect the coverage overall? And then they can't have anything else. So um. Again, I I don't know what the trigger is. I've just been told add it to the list. Look at making pools.
I can understand when the pool is closed, how it would not be imperious.
So, I mean, I lived in Florida for seven years, you know, it rained a lot. You know, if you had, your pool was low and it rained five inches, it didn't matter. But if your pool is not low and it rained five inches, because it rained five inches yesterday, you know, it's. you know, it's everywhere, in your yard, your neighbor's yard, their pool is running into your pool, is running across my yard, across that yard. I don't think we have that kind of rainfall problem here, those are more stream beds, but, you know, five inches of rain in central Florida is not that unusual.
Interesting.
Um, but yeah, so there's, you know, and other things that have just come as part of... Planning and zoning is reactionary. We generally do things because people come up with new ways of doing things, wanting things. Right, pools, pools are now the thing that people are...
The new ones now, they're also regulating, so if water goes in and water goes out and it's self-filling and all of that, yeah.
I'm just saying, there are far more pools in the last 10 years than pools were being built in the 10 years prior. Tennis courts were big in the 70s.
Yeah.
Basketball courts were big in the 80s.
Yeah, I lived in Elveron in the 1980s.
So we come up with regulations, these things as, you know, trends happen.
Well, thank you very much. You're welcome. Anyone else have any questions before we conclude? Thank you, Jack, thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, my apologies.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm the host. Good night.
Thank you, thanks for listening.